We're the best sushi bar in Corona. We're the original sushi bar in Corona. We specialize in fresh sushi. We've got shrimp sushi, fish sushi, Mexican salad, insomnala, white clams, which are really hard to find. Fresh Pacific oysters. Look at that. Every Wednesday after 3:00 p.m., we're doing $1.00 oysters and $3.00 beer. At every location, Corona, Chino Hills, and Uptown.
Thank you for coming so well. I'll see you again.
Also, ShopDine approved.
Welcome to the City Park Pop-Up Event.
Doing the community outreach is a great way to get everybody involved.
The city is so focused on getting everybody's input because this is a place that's going to be a city community center. And making sure it's the right fit for everybody, I think, is important. So I love this pop-up event.
It's just exciting to see the new changes that are coming to Corona. The City Park, we want to see it look beautiful.
This park was actually our first introduction to Corona, and it almost dissuaded us from moving here.
It's very exciting to see what the possibilities of the future City Park could be.
Yes, exciting.
Corona has a lot of good culture here, and looking forward to having a center place to celebrate that.
We're excited about the rebirth of the City Park. Park's been here for over 100 years. A space for the community. Now more important is going to be a chance for a rebirth of City Park to be timeless.
I grew up in this park.
I'm glad to see all the different clams.
I love that we get a say in it.
So it's not just, hey, we're the government officials, the city officials making the decision.
No, there are no presentations. No.
I got the short chair. No, no, it's fine.
Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. We're going to start with the invocation. Is Elijah Coombs here? Come on up, Elijah. Just come on up to that microphone. And then after you've done the invocation, would you do us the honor of doing the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the opportunity. We have to gather here, Lord, with freedom to do it. God, we thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us these past few days. Thank you for the freedoms that we have. God, I ask that in this meeting today. You'd give all of us, Lord, wisdom. Help us to honor your name. And I pray that ultimately you would get all the glory and the honor. We thank you, Lord, for this evening. Help us to have a blessed night and give everyone a safety as they travel home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elijah. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Edwards, can you read the special instructions?
Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sylvia. All right, there's no proclamations, recognitions, or presentations tonight. Let's go to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the city council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Do my colleagues have any items they'd like to pull? Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. 6.5, 6.6, 6.7. And that's it, just those three.
Wes, did you have something?
Just 6.5.
6.5? Tom, you good? Jackie, good?
6.9.
6.9? Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on any of the items?
Mayor, we have one speaker card for agenda item 6.5.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion on all items except for 6.5, 6.6, 6.7, 6.9?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Okay, those pass. 5-0. Go 6.5. Let's see, Tony, you were the first one to pull that one.
Yeah, I wanted to understand. Are we still transporting these biosolids because of the boil, the thing that...
What, dryer?
Thing to blow up.
Mayor, the answer's yes.
The answer's yes.
Where are we at with that? With the replacement? I know that, so I was trying to get an understanding of, because it seems like this is a lot of transportation. It is a lot of transportation. Doesn't seem like it. It's a lot of transportation.
Mayor, I'll have Tom Moody, our utilities director, speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're continually working. We have an offer from the insurance company that we rejected, and we're working through legal with that process to try and get there. In our last meetings, we were looking towards doing a RFP for design build so that we could get some firm numbers that we could work with on the insurance company to hopefully settle that lawsuit. And even after we have rebuilt the dryer, we will continue to haul biosolids. One of the byproducts of a wastewater treatment plant is biosolids. Whether they're wet or dry, we still need to remove them from the facility. So the biosolids contract, the hauling of biosolids will continue in operation even after the dryer is replaced.
Has it always been that way?
Yes.
So even when our dryer was drying, we were still transporting?
Correct.
Were we transporting to this same level?
No. So there's a significant difference when we talk about biosolids, wet biosolids versus dry biosolids. A wastewater treatment plant the size of ours produces biosolids at about 100 wet tons per day. That's a total of five trailers per day. So when a dryer is in operation, we will significantly reduce that number to 60 tons per week or three trailers per week. So there's a significant amount of water that is in our biosolids, even when we get it through the process, the current process. Wet biosolids is about 80% water. And dry biosolids is about 5% water.
Okay. And the other thing that I found amazing after reading this is that, like, this is getting shipped out of state. Or was it Northern California? I want to say Northern California, Arizona, Nevada, something like that.
Correct.
There's nobody locally that does this?
No.
Has it always been that way? Or was it always, like, trucking so far away?
Correct. California regulations have gotten more and more stringent, and the more and more stringent those regulations become, the further and further the biosolids will have to be hauled. Very similar to trash and other organic processing options out there.
That's just amazing considering as you keep saying biosolids. So this is a very nice way of saying that this is human waste. We all have to use the restroom. This is a byproduct of human nature, and they're regulating it. It just doesn't make any sense. But I guess that's the state of California for you. Thank you.
Wes, do you have comments on that?
You covered my question. That was it. I just wanted to see where we were in the process, and I think that's asked and answered. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, did you have some thoughts on this?
I do have some thoughts on this. I kind of want to contrast what was, what the story was before, which was, we have companies that buy the waste from us, that we didn't have to haul it, that having the dryer was just this, you know, really great financial benefit that we really couldn't live without. You know, to your point, it did, it was, it wasn't just that we didn't have to haul it, that people would actually, fertilizer companies would buy it from us because it was prepared and either mixed on-site or used by them to make fertilizer. So it was actually sort of a commodity that we could, we could get somebody to either purchase it from us or haul it away for free. So it was, it was a lot different situation. And I think at some point, there really needs to be some sort of disclosure about, you know, where we are. And if we're paying this much extra for not having the dryer, which it sounded like we used to be paying this much extra for not having the dryer, but there seems to be some minimization of, you know, minimizing of the costs, the additional costs. Insurance company isn't going to pay out if you decide to rebuild your house first before you get the settlement? It seems unlikely that if we, if, you know, that we couldn't fix this thing first on our own, regardless of whatever the insurance company settlement is. That doesn't seem reasonable. If it's that much of a, if it's that much of a benefit to have this dryer, we should fix the dryer. I think there's a principle about minimizing harm. You know, that maybe we should minimize the harm. You know, why don't we fix this thing? We have the money to fix it. We should maybe fix it and then still proceed with the lawsuit if there's a lawsuit to be had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were there any comments on 6.5?
Mayor, I can provide some more information on that if you want.
Yes, please.
So the city has initially began with the understanding that we would attempt to repair the facility. The problem was, when it went out to bid, nobody would repair it. The liability for repairing it is too significant. However, the insurance company has insisted upon keeping their offer for compensation only at the repair amount. So we are looking, as Tom has indicated now, of going out to a design build to get a better estimate and prove to them what the real cost would be. The problem with it is, instead of whatever $5 million, $7 million to repair it, we're talking anywhere from $20 to $35 million to build a new one. So to just go out and repair it and then ask the insurance company for money, that might end up being necessary. But you're talking about putting $20 to $35 million out before you know what the insurance company is going to pay from that. So it's not a simple, just go build it and ask the insurance company for money. It's a little bit more complicated than that.
To that point, since the costs have been growing because of the hauling, does that factor into our lawsuit as well?
We are tracking that information too as one of our components of damages.
Okay, so, so because, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's all being considered.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Can I get a motion on 6.5? Tony and Wes? Please vote. You having some IT issues over here?
Yeah.
Sylvia, my screen went down, but I'm a yes.
Okay, that passes 5-0. 6.6, Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a whole bunch of questions for Chief. So, you know, I still am struggling with wanting to subsidize our police officers' time on school campuses. I've been doing some research. Local cities around us do not have the same cost structure or breakdown. So our neighbors to the north do not pay anything to put RSO officer in their schools. And even a little bit further north in Eastville, they have a different cost-sharing agenda with the same school district. And down in Lake Elsinore, they don't pay anything to their school district for putting RSO. And so to me, this seems like we're getting taken advantage of. So I have some questions. It looks like grant money is going away for, that was covering the fifth officer that was doing intermediate schools. Is there other grants that we are looking for in order to help offset that?
Mayor, can I have the Chief Newman speak to this?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Daddario. We're constantly reviewing and evaluating grants to offset the cost of personnel. At this time, we don't have any opportunities for another school resource grant. We may have applied and just did not receive additional funding.
Okay. Why are we doing five-year terms on this instead of just looking at it on a year-by-year basis? In reading the staff report every February, we are supposed to get a review of this program. And I don't recall seeing a review of this program being presented to us. So I want to know why we're doing a five-year term instead of a year-to-year term when we're supposed to be reviewing the program every February.
Councilmember Daddario, the February review is a brand-new term for this current agenda item. We have not had a February review, and that review is not for necessarily a council review. That is for our staff and the district to review the program, to review the personnel and the resources for the program. At this point, we haven't had an annual meeting to really discuss it. And the district and the principals at each school meet with their school resource officers, but there hasn't been a district-to-police annual meeting. And that's what this is establishing, is a review of the process in that manner.
Okay. And then this, this, this new contract, we are raising the limits on overtime to 15,000 per officer, per RSO officer. Is that correct? And that's the cap?
Yeah, so currently, and here's an interesting fact. This, the current contract that we're in right now, so we have four school resource officers that are dedicated to the high schools in Corona. That contract was initiated in 2021, and it ends in June of 2026. So that was another five-year agreement. Part of the reason why we're coming back now is because of the grant funding, as you mentioned, for the intermediate school. And we're wrapping it all into one, right? So to answer your previous question, we believe that this is best practice. Instead of having multiple agreements with the school district, we wanted to have one with the school district. That's why we're coming back to you now. Since 2004, the Corona Police Department and the school district have had an agreement where $15,000 of overtime costs would be covered by the school district for all four schools. It's not per school, it's not per officer. It's $15,000 overtime to cover just if the school resource officer called in sick, had vacation, that we would fill it, and that $15,000 would help supplement some of that overtime cost. Obviously, that $15,000 has been way overpassed in years. And so this contract now changes that. So because this contract ends technically, this is an amendment or restatement of a current contract. The contract doesn't end until 2026. In good faith, we told them you can keep your $15,000 overtime for those four school resource officers, but you're going to have to pay 100% overtime for the new intermediate school officer. This in fiscal year '26. Beginning in fiscal year '27 for the next following four years, that is when the overtime increases to $84,000 for all five schools. So it increases incrementally. So it starts at $84,000 fiscal year '27. And then at the end of the contract, I believe it's over $90,000 in overtime. And that is just, I just want to reiterate, that is just if an officer calls in sick for school that day, for the school resource officer that day. This does not include special events, graduations. We're going to come to council with a different agreement for that, hopefully very soon. That will be 100% cost recovery from the school district for those events.
So if you, if you plan to come back to us with another update, why aren't we doing these all at once rather than doing it in two steps or two phases?
Well, one, the school resource, the intermediate school resource officer funding ends this month. So it was important for us to have that agreement in place. And two, they're two different things because the school resource officers are a school safety measure for everyday operations, right? It helps us for staffing to figure out that. The event, the special event situations are periodic, right? They're not every day. And that is something that we're hoping that we can take that agreement and utilize it for other events for other organizations. So while this one will be geared towards the school district, we're hoping that we can write it in a way where we can also utilize that for other organizations.
So do you think that, are we, I know that we have of the four RSOs that we have, two of them work summer school, and then two of them don't?
Yes.
Is the intermediate officer going to be working a summer school in the middle schools?
It's the same, yes. If there is a year-round school, if there is summer sessions, the intermediate will fill into that. Those officers, those five officers are dedicated to our family services team to be utilized for whatever programs are necessary for that.
So then this is just adding to the current agreement that ends next fiscal year? Or this fiscal year, but next calendar year? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to come back again with another amendment to add more for overtime and a couple of other things?
Yes, for all the special events that come outside of everyday school resource officer duties.
Okay. Can I ask, Mr. Ellis, that when you come back for the updated version of the overtime in a couple of months, I'm assuming a couple of months, that you get us the final details on Eastville, Norco, and Lake Elsinore? Because I don't think that this contract is fair. I don't like it at all. I made no mistake, I made no bones about that. I don't think that we should be subsidizing to put our officers in their schools. But I would like to make sure that we are not getting taken advantage of in comparative with the same district in other municipalities. So I've had conversations with some other cities, but I'd like to have the actual numbers rather than perhaps a politician that's winging it that gave me some information, but just actual numbers for the next presentation.
So you're asking for the cost recovery share with other cities that they have with their police departments?
That is correct.
Yeah, if the council wants to give that direction, we're happy to take it.
I have that information if you'd like it now.
Please.
Okay. So for Norco, you're absolutely correct. The Sheriff's Department does not, so the Sheriff's Department has five contracts with Corona-Norco Unified School District for school resource. The Sheriff's Department does not fund those. They are funded from either the school district, the Corona-Norco Unified, 100% funds the Norcos High School Resource Officer. That is correct. Roosevelt has two school resource officers. It's a large school, obviously. The city of Eastville pays 50% of one officer and 25% of a second officer. Riverside Police Department funds Alver and RUSD, 50%. Shared motor pool, it's very, very same, if not the same as ours. Checked in with Irvine, the city of Irvine. They have 13 full-time school resource officers, fully funded by the city of Irvine. Not by the school district at all.
Okay, the other one that I didn't, it didn't bother calling Orange County, but Lake Elsinore was the other one. And Lake Elsinore shared with me that they don't pay anything for their, that's with RSO. So I guess it irks me even more that we're not paying the same model that other cities are. It should be, at least it should be the same. I don't know why Norco gets away with not having to pay for it, but it's the same school district, and they've got different contracts with different municipalities. And we apparently are paying a larger share than other municipalities. So thank you, Chief. If you, if you wouldn't mind, if I could ask for Lake Elsinore, just to verify. But coming back, I would like to just have that information simply because when it comes back in a year, we'll have this conversation again when it needs to be re-upped. I also don't like it that it's a five-year contract. It should be done every year.
And just to be clear, it's not coming back next year because it's a five-year contract if you approve it. Just the special event portion.
So this is renew, yeah, that's what I thought. So this is renewing it until 2030, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. See, I don't want to renew it for another five years, especially seeing as it doesn't seem like it's a fair deal across, across the, I don't know, the valley or whatever it is that you want to say. If Norco's not paying anything and Eastville's got a different cost share, this is with the same school district. It doesn't make any sense to me. So if it's a valuable program, as everybody seems to think it is, why are we, why are we paying for half of it? And that doesn't even get into the fact that we've been paying all kinds of overtime as a result of this because we don't have enough overtime built into this program, and they're using it for a lot of other things. And also, that one-year review, I would like for that to come back to council as well to judge the effectiveness of this program. It hasn't been brought to us our attention at all. So if they're going to renew it every, or if they're going to review it every year, then the contract should be for a one-year term. Especially seeing as they're evaluating the effectiveness of it. So I do have an amended motion, which would be to... Oh, yeah, please. Yes, Wes?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify. I know we've had this discussion in the past. So let's just say that we don't have an agreement. Now, if there's a call at a school, we're responding, and we're that many minutes away, and we're not getting anything for that. So how many calls? I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, asking you how many calls, but just, you know, you've talked about this before, the benefit of this.
That's an excellent question. Councilmember, speak. I don't have the number of calls, but I know we're extremely busy on campus, extremely busy. There's a unique protocol in place for when you're dealing with juveniles, especially on school campuses. Our school resource officers are expertly trained, receive advanced officer training for that. To not have an officer there daily provides a loss in security calm for the campus and a gap of intelligence. But it also provides a little bit additional risk because we're sending officers that may not have that kind of, type of training and value relating to the individual students, to the faculty that we do right now. But even if we did not have this contract, I believe that that is a valuable asset. And I would believe the safety of our students and our community would require an officer to be there. I know that's a lengthy discussion, could go whatever way, but that's my opinion. I want an officer at our department to be on campus. They've been there since the 1990s, and I would not take that away from them now.
And so would you say, though, that there would have been an incident at least once a day in one of these, you know, or once or twice a week in these things, that there is something we'd have to respond to anyway?
Absolutely. Yeah, and some of those incidents, I mean, I'd say there's probably more like five or six, you know, incidents that are happening. And the officer just being present deters those incidents from occurring, right? But there's also STAR protocol, which is a county requirement for us to respond to threats to students or faculty on campus, where it is three hours minimum where we have to, the school resource officer investigates the threat, goes to the student's home, does a consensual check of the house, makes sure there's no weapons or credibility to the threat, and then addresses it from there. So if we did that, that is one officer that's off the street for at minimum three hours.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I remember this discussion previously, and I'm doing the math. And between that and the intelligence, I know that the school resource officers bring a lot of intelligence for potential issues, not only potential issues, but actual crimes, you know, lots of crimes that either could start or end in some way at a school. And I, I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that, that there's a big benefit in the financial part. Isn't just a, you know, it's not like we would never respond. We would have to respond anyway, and we'd be getting at least something. So anyway, just another argument.
Anything?
I'm good.
I think it's interesting, nobody's discounting the value of the program. I'm simply saying, in Norco, it's so valuable that the school district pays for it. We've never given them an opportunity to pay for it here.
I'm just saying that if they either couldn't pay for it...
Tony, we could always bring this...
...be responding anyway.
We could bring this up at our next Joint Schools Committee and discuss it there and find out those answers.
If there's more questions, please. And then I have a motion to make in order to address that. So if there's more questions, go ahead.
Jackie?
I just wanted to ask a bit of a question. So my understanding is, aside from enforcement and safety, that our school resource officers are actually, like, building relationships with students. And in years past, we've seen the value of having a connected community with our public safety. And a lot of that, it goes a long way when we're building those relationships at a young age. So I was wondering if Chief, you can speak a little bit So I was wondering if Chief, you can speak a little bit about the things that are not enforcement-based that the RSOs do on school campus?
Sure. It is just exactly that. Like our school resource officers spend a large percentage of their day just walking about campus, right? They get to know who these students are and they do build positive relationships where in some cases, police may have been a negative influence on their life and now we have an opportunity for that one officer to turn that around. They are also involved with administrative interviews, discussions, it's not all criminal matters. They're heavily involved in the daily functions of the school operations at those levels at this point, heavily relied upon by the vice principal for discipline. And sometimes, in a lot of cases, a juvenile that's being, let's say they had marijuana, cannabis on campus or some of that, we can handle that through our youth diversion program, but that's a lengthy process where that person doesn't have to go to court, but there's still paperwork, right? And the school doesn't have access to that diversion process. We have to initiate that and we have additional resources for that student to attach themselves to in lieu of the the court system, right? So we potentially would lose that because that is a complicated system that we just wouldn't have the resources on campus to document.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. And, you know, it's interesting because, you know, it's their schools, you know, but but it's it's our kids and this is value, it's a shared value. So I, I see, I see this as not just a step for partnership, but I see this also as us protecting our community in a space that wouldn't, we wouldn't have access to if we didn't have this partnership. So I just wanted to make note that it's more than just safety.
You know, my, my kids still talk about, you know, Officer Griffiths and they've been out of school for almost 15, 20 years now and they still, they still ask me and ask me how he's doing. I say he's all right, I guess.
Yeah. And we recruit our, many of our explorers through this program as well. They build many positive relationships.
Yeah, and I've talked to Detective Saylor about that quite a bit and he's told me so many stories and, and, yeah, and I'm at Orange Grove every week too and to, I feel really good having an officer on scene there. But I do think that they make some incredible contacts and just have a presence that keeps everybody on their toes a little bit. And so like Tony said, none of us are devaluing the the program itself. We absolutely have to have our officers. I wish we could have them at every school, at every elementary school, but in time, maybe. As far as, Tony, you made a comment about, you know, maybe this should come back to us every year or at least next year so we can get an overall, I guess, answers to some of the questions that you had, but I don't disagree with you on that. So let's hear your motion, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, do we have any public comments on this?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, I know that we were going to have at some point a meeting with our counterparts at the district, but I just want to pause, my, my alternate motion is to pause this this amend, this first amended request until we can give CNUSD an opportunity to explain why we don't have the same fee structure as Norco or Eastvale and see if we can give them an opportunity to come back and renegotiate. This doesn't stop the program, the program is still continued, still continues to go, it's just we're talking about overtime. And eventually, this will also, this as amended will will push the program through 2030. But I would like to at least give them an opportunity to explain why we, why we're paying more than our counterparts.
And Chief, you don't know that answer, right?
I have spoken with members of the district, the current superintendent for security, and his response to that exact question is, those agreements were in place a long time ago and not that that's an excuse, but they're just, the Norco agreement hasn't been revisited, right? And ours, ours is up and ours has been in place since the 90s. We, so, it's one of those conversations that I imagine, our billable rate for all-in, which is what we have, is going to be, you know, much higher. It can be, and I haven't looked at the sheriff's contract, it can be that they bill just for hourly and not for all-in package for benefits included. And so there could be a difference like that, that you'd have to compare the two contracts.
Thank you. So if you just voted on a one-year contract for tonight and we spend the next year getting that answer, then we would be able to address this next year with with potential updated rates?
I like the updated rates.
Well, I don't know how we would do that. I mean, I don't, I like the idea, but, but, you know, amending this, which is an amended already, to just a one-year term with all of this in here minus making it, is that what you're saying? Basically, agree to all of this, but for a one-year term and not extending it to 2030?
Right.
That way, we can get an idea of the costs...
And why we're paying different than Eastvale and Norco and maybe we could revisit that.
Okay, I would, I would, I think I have to...
We didn't...
Remove my amended motion, even though we didn't vote on it.
Didn't get a second.
You never got a second, so you're really just talking out loud at this point.
Thank you, Dean, I appreciate it.
All right, do we have another amended motion?
Okay, yeah, I mean...
Got a motion.
I would, I would amend the amended motion to just make this...
Substitute motion?
A substitute motion to just make this a one-year term instead of the five-year term, giving us all of the more money for overtime, which is part of this request as well, and then, do I have that right?
I'll second that.
So Chief or Jacob, does that bring up any unintended consequences?
Chief, you want to speak first for that? Yes, it does, because this is, this agreement pretty much amends years two through, you know, five. The first year, the only amendment is including the intermediate, intermediate school resource officer to include an additional overtime for that position, but it doesn't really change any of the, of the current contract. So all these amendment, you know, all these adjustments for overtime would not take effect. They would not come in play then.
So then it sounds to me like what we need to do is, is move this forward, but remove the part that makes this valid through 2030 and put this back to when it's supposed to end in 2026, is that correct?
Is it correct? That's more of a proposal than it is a question.
Yeah, well, no, that's what I'm saying. In order to get the overtime, which is what he's talking about, which is what this amended contract does, but the other, the other part in this is that it's, it pushes the contract that's supposed to end in 2026 to 2030.
So just as a, another option for you, if you're exploring options, it does have a 30-day termination clause, so you could approve the contract for five years and after you've met with the school, if you find that the answer is given to you or unsatisfactory and you want to change your minds, you could always terminate it as well.
That makes, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I, no.
You got 30-day grace period?
No, because that's not going to get pushed through. That 30 days is going to get forgotten and I've forgotten about things and so I don't want to get, I don't want to push it through and then...
I don't forget.
I'll remind you.
I forgot about that. I like, I like the 30-day option.
So there was a motion and a...
We can get, we can get your answer within 30 days.
Do you have a meeting already scheduled?
I got contacts.
I think, well, you made a motion, I seconded. So are you subs, are you withdrawing your motion?
I'm not withdrawing my motion, I don't want to just, I...
I don't want to just wait, I don't want to just push this through and then hope that in 30 days, we figure this out, because then we're rushing.
No, I'm saying, your motion is one year.
Can we just vote on it tonight and then revisit it in a 30-day? You now need to vote on the substitute motion first, so if you want to go ahead and vote on that, if it doesn't get the votes, then you'll go back to the main motion.
You restate the substitute motion?
The substitute motion, I believe, was the same contract, but for a year.
Yeah.
But the mayor's question was, what does that do? And I think like what it does is it's not actually, like, it's not a valid motion because it's not on the table, is, was my understanding of what the chief was saying.
I don't know if the school district will agree to it, obviously, but all it, all that will give us, which is fine, is the intermediate school resource officer, that that'll be included into this contract with the overtime for that position alone. Everything else will pretty much remain intact.
And as Jacob said, we could get out of it in 30 days anyway. So I don't see any harm in it.
I don't either.
So my motion stands and then we could vote on it.
Let's vote, okay.
And we could cancel it in 30 days.
I'm sorry, I, there's a disconnect. I'm sorry, there's a disconnect. There's a disconnect between what you think you're voting on and what is on the table.
I'm not disconnected at all, because the caveat is, the school district has to agree to it and if they don't...
No.
Yes?
You can't, you, so I know it's confusing. So the, the document that's on the dais is not the motion per se. The motion would be to, to propose to the district that this agreement be a one-year agreement. And so that has a motion and a second. You need to vote on that unless the first or the second pulls their consent. So if that gets voted down three to two, then we go back to the original motion.
But what's on the table is a one-year of all of these things, even though all of these things are not up to negotiation. The only thing that's negotiated right now for a one-year extension is the, is the officer for the intermediate school.
That's correct.
So do you understand, you're not voting on the whole thing, you're only voting on that?
I understand, no, no, listen, I understand that if this, my amended motion passes, the chief has to go back to the school district and negotiate it for a one-year term and if they know that it comes back to us anyway, is that correct?
I think so, I think that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay? Okay.
All right, please vote. Yeah? So, do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we... You can just say you approve the recommended action. That's not my, that's not my motion and I don't want to be just talking up here. So I would like to make the motion that we approve what's in this verbiage constantly presented, but we bring it, also bring it back to a future council meeting within the next 30 days to review our 30-day grace period.
I second that motion.
Please vote.
Mayor, just may I interject really quickly?
Sure, why not?
You have one council meeting in two weeks and then we go dark and so you might want to give yourself 60 days in order for us to be able to bring it back, unless you can get it done in two weeks or less.
You said we only have 30.
We only have a 30-day grace period.
You, you only have to give 30 days of notice to terminate the contract. So you could give yourselves 60 days to give yourselves a little bit of time so that we could actually bring you back to a council meeting.
Okay, then I'm good with the 60-day. But it needs to be in a future agendized council meeting, so it's not forgotten.
All right, so we got...
Or an agendized council meeting.
Tom and Jackie, please vote. Okay, that passes four to zero, or four, four one, sorry. All right, and then we move on to 6.7. Thanks a lot, Tony. 6.7, you're up, Tony.
Yep. I wanted to ask about if I could get some explanation on 6.7, letter G. What exactly does that mean?
So that deadly weapon response program is a response, if there's a shooting event in the city, mass shooting event, it would provide counseling services and others, other types of response efforts for the police department in this city. So that's what that's for, to provide services and other related efforts.
So that's the dollar amount that is associated with those services, should they be needed?
Yeah, it's a $500,000 policy and the premium is $9,133. We purchased this for the first time just about three or four years ago, I believe. It was a new program that was offered.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. With that, I'll move.
No public comments on that, Ms. Edwards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Tony and Wes, please vote. Okay, it passes 5-0, go to 6.9, Vice Mayor Casillas.
Yes. The short-range transit plan, I know you've put a lot of work and effort into it and then talk a little bit about the extension of the low-cost fares and maybe speak a little bit on the service changes that are coming.
If I can, I do have like a five-page slide, if they can upload that. Perfect. Thank you for having me here. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Shudraj Paul, I am the Transit Program Manager, I oversee the city's transit services. Let me see, the next slide. It's not working, there it is. Okay, so the services, want to remind everyone what kind of service that we provide. We have the Corona Cruiser fixed-out service, which includes the Blue Line and the Red Line, a citywide dollar ride program for all seniors and persons with disabilities, as well as a dollar ride, our dollar ride provides a complimentary pair of transit services in compliance with ADA, three-quarter mile of our fixed-out service. We all operate on weekdays and Saturdays and we have 20 vehicles in our fleet, 13 vehicles are specially used for dollar ride and as well as, you know, sometimes we use a Corona Cruiser, but we have seven vehicles that are dedicated to fixed-out service. Little bit information about our ridership data, as you can see, from fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2023, 2024, we've been having, been doing a great job, you know, and it's all having to do with our fare, fare, free fares due to a program called Low Carbon Transit Operations Program Funds. So we've been providing free fares for our seniors, students and our persons with disabilities. Currently, our free fare program is valid through June of next year and next year, I'll be looking into a new fare program that will subsidize, I got to come up with a new idea because they want to prove a similar program next year. But the idea, the goal is to continue program, providing free fares for at least the seniors and our students. As you can see, for fiscal year, for our current fiscal year, our ridership for our Corona Cruiser is on a decline 10% and that's because beginning of the fiscal year, we had quite a bit of construction activities going on, the citywide pavement project, we've got the McKinley, great separation that continues to impact our service. So majority of the decline is on a blue, is on a Blue Line route. So we are focusing on trying to increase our marketing efforts, maybe some social media and, you know, our dollar services, it continues to grow, which we, you know, we're working with various different senior centers as well as adult daycare centers. A little highlight of our next year's budget breakdown, majority of our budget is for contracted services at 83% and our, our operations is contracted. So from last fiscal year to this fiscal, well, this current fiscal year to next fiscal year, there's a 5% increase and that's expected as it's, there's an increase to accommodate the increase from year to year cost for transit operations. It also includes a allocation for consulting services, which will be used for, to assist us with service planning for the following year. We also have a 90% increase in salaries and benefits and that's to accommodate the increase in wages effective December 28th, as well as a full cost for new management analysts. And the materials supplies increased by 23%, that's to accommodate the increase in transit fare share and administrative cost. All the cost increases have been offset by a decrease in fuel cost by 13% and other auxiliary program expenditures. So I wanted to give you guys a little bit of a highlight, which I know is what you're expecting. For fiscal year 25, 26, the majority of the focus is going to be on the consulting services. The transit service planning and implementation, if you recall, we council had adopted, approved the scenario two of the route improvements in August, I believe it was August 16 of 2023. So we've spent the past year basically releasing a solicitation and re-releasing the solicitation so that we've spent the past six months reviewing the one proposal that we received, expecting to come back to council, first council meeting in August with a recommendation for, to work to that consultant that's proposed. And those consulting services would include transit service planning and implementation. The new route planning includes micro-transit services. Also, they'll be developing standards for bus stop amenities and redesigning all public information materials. And the capital improvement project component includes the bus stop improvements, the ITS, replacement of buses and deployment of these zero emission bus technologies. Of course, we will continue marketing efforts to re-engage residents. The part of the service improvement plan includes a robust marketing efforts as well. So some of the challenges we're going to be coming across is, of course, you know, competing priorities, we've got multiple, we've got two audits coming up in the next four months, a federal and a state, a state audit, so we don't have enough state staff bandwidth, so we stretch then. So we'll continue focusing on, you know, maintaining our operations, in the meantime, trying to bring on the new consultant and work on the implementation activities. Of course, there's going to be solicitation challenges because we've got five different projects that we've got to get out, so. Any, and, questions?
Thank you, Ms. Paul. I, I just, I, I wanted to highlight the short-range transit plan. I know that we've been working on improving coverage, I know that it's a slow go and I know how hard you worked to get funding for this, but definitely I like to see people taking... But definitely, I like to see people taking advantage of the low rates, and I know that you're working very hard to, um, keep those rates low, so.
Yeah, definitely trying. We're hoping to keep that, um, fare subsidies, uh, program going. If we can use LC-TAL funds, we'll maybe tap into the AB 2766 subsidy, you know, use that funds to subsidize the fares.
And remind me, when we bring on this consultant, if, you know, we're going to award the contract in the summer, when will we see the new routes?
I would advise them, since we've already used that one year of the three years, so we're looking to one and a half to two years max.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bales? Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Do I get a motion somewhere?
I'll move to approve.
Jackie and Tom, please vote.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, passes 5-0. Communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments and what's called upon to speak. Please state your name and city of residence for the records. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay, let's move on to public hearings. 8.1, resolution confirming and authorizing the placement of delinquent solid waste charges on the property tax bill. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? Public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for this item.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. No questions or comments from my colleagues? One, okay, Ms. Casillas?
8.1, right? Yeah, I, you know, I know that this is already in place. I, I just, I don't agree with it, and, um, I, I understand why it's being used. Um, I just don't think it's a proper, it's, um, a proper tool. I think it's a, it's a really big hammer, and I don't, uh, believe that it should go on people's property tax rolls, so.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Tony and Wes. That passes four to one. Moving on to administrative reports. Adoption of the city of Corona proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. Amendments to the fiscal year 2025 adopted budget and related contract amendments, change orders and purchase orders. Julie Kennicott, our deputy finance director, will present this item. Julie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to present to you the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. I previously presented this information to you in May, and I am happy to say nothing has changed since that presentation. We will now go over the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget in brief. We will cover the total of all funds, look at the water and sewer utility funds, and end with general fund, including Measure X and the general fund forecast. Starting off with the total of all funds. Looking at revenue estimates for all the funds, it is estimated at $523.3 million for next fiscal year. Again, this is the same amount presented at the study session a couple of weeks ago, and is an increase of $75.6 million, or 16.9% compared to the current year estimates. Looking at expenditures for all funds, it is estimated at $456.3 million for next fiscal year. This is a decrease of 9.3 million, or 2% compared to when we adopted the current budget last June. Moving on to proprietary funds. These are programs or activities that are supported by rates and/or fees. They may also include grants or reimbursements from other governmental agencies. For the water, water utility fund, revenues are estimated at 71.1 million, and total expenditures are at 68.1 million with the breakdown on the left-hand side. The spike you see in fiscal year 2023 revenue is a one-time settlement payment of $19 million. Some of the projects included here are potable water line replacement, well rehabilitation, and water line infrastructure. The sewer utility fund has revenue estimates of $39.9 million and combined expenditures of $45.5 million. Because expenditures exceed revenues by 5.6 million in fiscal year 2026, the budget is balanced by the use of fund balance, which is projected to be 9.4 million. Some of the projects include water reclamation facility number two equalization basin replacement, digester equipment rehab and electrical upgrade, and sewer line infrastructure. Moving on to the general fund. For next year, the total inflows, which is a combination of both revenue and transfers in, is estimated to be $241.3 million. That is an increase of 7.7 million, or 3.3% when compared to the current fiscal year. I'm sure everybody's eye is drawn to that fiscal year 2022 actuals. Again, that spike is due to those pension obligation bonds that we issued, and this is the last year that we will see it on this graph, as it will fall off during the fiscal year 2027 budget process. The other unique situation falls within the fiscal year 2025 estimate. We usually don't have that much as transfers in for general fund, but we had to make adjustments for ARPA. Now we're looking at the five largest categories that are in the general fund. Those are sales tax, property tax, other tax, current services, and other revenues. Sales tax is about 43% of the general fund revenues, while property tax is about 29.4%. Just those two alone account for 72.4% of the general fund revenues, and as you can see, the top five make up 89.5% of the general fund inflows. This is a year-over-year comparison. I won't go through each of the lines, but the primary drivers of the changes are shown in the comments column. The proposed general fund operating budget is $231 million. The total by department is shown on the left, and I will move on to the next slide to show you some more details. This is a breakdown by department with the department totals on the right-hand side, and then by expenditure type with the, those totals down at the bottom. The grand total is just over $231 million for fiscal year 2026. The fiscal year 26 Measure X investment plan includes allocating $42.6 million to one-time and recurring expenditures, and 2.2 million to reserve, to reserves for a total of $44.8 million. The reserves are 2.2 million, recurring total is 38.2 million, one-time total 4.4 million, and those one-time, uh, are made up of operating purchases, O&amp;M projects, and capital improvement projects. The four largest categories are public safety, proactive debt retirement, homelessness, and service improvements. This is some of the same information, just a different breakdown, percentages. The allocations shown here are based on the revenue projections of $44.8 million for Measure X. Previously-approved recurring items total 83.5% of the estimated total. New recurring items are another 1.8%, bringing that total to 85.3%. One-time items total 9.8% and reserves total 4.9% to round out the total of estimated Measure X funds. Here is a look at the general fund forecast. It includes actuals from the prior fiscal year, the current fiscal year, both adopted and amended. The proposed fiscal year 2026 is shown in the box. There is also forecast information for the next four fiscal years. The information presented includes the operating expenditures, capital and O&amp;M projects, and service change requests. The items with blue shading are estimates for future years based on direction from the city council related to the downtown improvement projects. In the upper portion, each fiscal year is looking at total inflows versus total outflows in that specific year. The bottom section includes items going to or from fund balance or reserves. The fund balance plus Measure X reserves includes the unassigned fund balance. The $475,000 from the park bond reserve is to fund the Musco lighting project at Promenade Park, and a separate line is shown for the items that are funded from donations and peg fees. For fiscal year 2026, donation-funded items include library books, property and evidence drug destruction, animal control program supplies, and some cold air balloon rentals for the, for the Fourth of July event. You may notice that there is a projected shortfall in the inflows over outflows line in fiscal year 2025 and recurring, starting in fiscal year 2027. In fiscal year 2025, throughout the fiscal year, there have been budgeted items approved for fund, I'm sorry, from fund balance. They include traffic signal optimization, the new ERP system, Corona Mall acquisitions, and fire apparatus. The negative out, starting in fiscal year 2027, is based on the information we has of, we have as of today, and we will continue to monitor and update the information to bring you a balanced budget for review and approval. Wrapping this all up and coming full circle, this slide shows the revenue estimates for all funds and includes the history of two years of actuals, current year adopted, current year estimates, and the fiscal year 2026 proposed, as well as the dollar and percentage change. Estimates for all funds and revenue is estimated at $523.3 million, which is an increase of $75.6 million, or 16.9% compared to the current year estimates. Similar to the previous revenue slide, this slide gives us the history of two years of actuals, current adopted budget, as well as proposed budget for expenditures in all funds. The estimate is $456.3 million for next fiscal year, and this is a decrease of 9.3 million, or 2% compared to when we adopted the current budget last June. What's next? We are here before you tonight, um, with this proposed budget for adoption, and then the fiscal year 2026 would begin July 1st. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Alright. Anybody have any questions? Tony?
I don't have any questions, but I do have comments.
Sure.
And you might want to ask for questions first because I have a amended proposition for this.
Okay, um, why don't we go to the public first?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. So, questions? Wes, you have any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you, and I know this has been a, a trudge for, for all, so I just want to thank you, we got to this point. I know there was lots of, uh, pushing and pulling, and I, I still have some, some worry, but I don't think that will ever go away, but, uh, but thank you. I don't have any other questions, that's it.
Jackie, you good? Alright. Then we're good. Thank you. Oh, you want to make, oh, sorry, what do you got? What do you want to do now?
Yeah, so, um...
For one year?
No. I would like to recommend that we a-approve this with one small change.
What would that be?
In, uh, the capital improvement projects for 2026, specifically FC-2026-05, there's a line item for just under $1.1 million to build a new pickleball court at El Cerrito. I have a little bit of, of hesitation because the pickleball courts at Eagle Glen are set to be open, uh, by Labor Day. And with the proximity to those 17 new courts that are being opened at Eagle Glen to El Cerrito, I'm a little concerned that we may be over-investing in pickleball and oversaturating an area of pickleball. So my amended proposal or secondary motion is to approve this with a pause on pickleball at El Cerrito, so we could see the impact that the pickleball courts at, at Eagle Glen have on our community. Because what I would hate to do is for them to build the beautiful facility, and then for us to, a year later, build the facility that nobody goes to without understanding the impact of a brand-new pickleball facility in, in Corona.
You like to say something, Wes?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I, I, um, I get where you're going. I just think that they're two different things. And, and frankly, if we, you know, we, we had, there's a lot of pressure with the folks at Border Park to try and not wind down, but at least lessen the impact there. And, um, and I think frankly, if we took an established plan that we were looking to invest in the community in a, in a very fast-growing industry, and paused it in a way that would potentially benefit a for-profit business, and though I love this for-profit business, and that, I think it's a brilliant idea, I would think that it would be, you know, pushing our residents into having to pay. And so I, I don't think there's going to be an issue just based on how popular this sport is and the fact that people can't get to the courts that, that, that are the minimal courts that we do have. I don't think that's going to be a problem, and I, I would not be in favor of that. I think we've made a, we've made a concerted effort with the, the pickleball folks to, to get them some courts they could use that, that aren't going to be impacted or impact residents, and I, I think frankly, we would be kind of pulling the rug out from them at the last minute, and I'm not willing to, to do that.
I, I didn't realize that they were coming on this Labor Day. I mean, if we, if we had this project, I mean, we wouldn't, when would this even come online? The pickleball courts on, on our end?
Donna, do you have a, a rough estimate for that?
Yes, so our plan is to, um, start design after the budget is approved in probably early summer, and then we're anticipating about an 18-month timeline, including design and construction, to get the project fully up and running.
18 months, so 26 at the earliest, 27 more likely?
Yes.
I think, when do we start spending money on that project, though? I know that it's not fully, you know, fully funded until it's built, but right now, we haven't spent any money on that project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But we will be soon.
We will be.
I, I'd like to see the impact of the 17 courts on Eagle Glen on the demand of, from our community. I'd be okay with a pause.
I'll, I'll second, I'll third the pause.
I'd be okay with the pause, especially since our project would take so long.
Have you not been listening to our pickleball community?
Yeah, 17 courts coming online.
I'm not going to get murdered because I support what's being...
But those 17, those 17 people, I mean, those 17 courts are pay courts. They're, you're going to have to pay to use.
Right.
So our public that is now using courts for free and would be, have been told that we're going to build courts that they'll be able to use for free, we're now telling them, oh, we're going to wait and see if you go to the places to pay. This is a bad, I think, not only bad optics, this is a, uh, this is not good.
Well, what, what if you reverse that, Wes? What if Tony's suspicions or fears are right, and...
Then we have great pickleball.
You have empty pickleball courts that sit...
Then they get converted to, to, back to tennis. They're not being used now. I don't understand. This is, the, the pickleball community is expanding exponentially.
And, and there's some courts that are coming online this year. Our process doesn't, I mean, it would take until 2027. So what's a little bit of a wait time to see if...
How you, how are you going to measure it?
Demand.
I'm saying this is that, how do you know who's using these courts? Are they people that are coming out of town and paying? Or these are going to be, they're going to be also tournament courts. They're not going to be drop-in and play courts. I, I, I don't know. I just think we, we've, we've come pretty far with our pickleball community.
We've been putting pressure on staff for three, four years...
Yes.
To get going on pickleball, and now we're getting going on pickleball, and you want to stop it?
Well, the difference, I think the, the biggest difference is, is that you have a private industry that broke ground last month, and they're planning on having 17 courts up and going by Labor Day, right? So, what is that, s, five months? It's going to take us 18 months to build courts that aren't going to be pickleball...
But what...
Courts. They're going to be repurposed pickleball courts. So we've got 10 courts at Border. We've got a couple, a couple, uh, courts that are scattered at some other parks, and we will see an impact, whether or not Border continues to, to be used, probably by the end of the year. The challenge here is, and the reason that I'm not saying let's abandon it, I'm just saying let's pause it, is because soon, we are going to have to spend money on the design and so on and so forth. And what happens if, by the end of the year, nobody's playing at Border because everybody is up playing on these championship caliber courts up at Eagle Glen? And now, we're looking at a, a park that's not being utilized, and here we are in the process of building 10 more. Three years ago, none of us knew that Eagle Glen was going to do this. This is something that has changed, and, you know, good government is being able to, to make some changes when they need to be made. I'm not saying abandon the project. I'm simply saying let's pause it until the end of the year, and let's see what impact these courts have on our pickleball community.
I know this budget is a full proposal for a year, but is there a way to just remove this single capital improvement project for consideration at the end of the calendar year, rather than waiting for the entire fiscal year? year, rather than waiting for the entire fiscal year?
Yes, we can do that.
That gives us a couple months after the Labor Day opening in Eagle Glen to see what the impact has been in our public parks.
I'm not removing my motion, so we can vote on it, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. If it does?
And is this a, a digital vote here?
So, the motion, the motion is to pause until the end of this calendar year?
Sure.
I can support that.
Can I just ask, seek clarification? So we would pause it until the end of the calendar year, and then bring that back for council to re-explore, or just pause it until further direction?
It would come back just like it is right now in the budget.
So wait for six months, and then it automatically is?
No, no, we vote, we vote on it.
Bring it back to council for further discussion.
Okay.
All right, please vote. Okay, that's approved, three to two. Moving on to item 10, which is legislative matters and ordinance amending chapter 3.08 of the Corona Municipal Code to update the city's purchasing regulations. Does any council member want a staff report on this item?
Mayor, I think we.
You did.
I think we do need a staff report on this, because we had some questions the last time.
You're correct. Kim Sitten, Finance Director, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yes, this is a follow-up item to the purchasing changes that were proposed at the May 21st meeting, and so we're here to bring you some updates on the items that were discussed at that point. So we'll ask again that the City Council discuss the proposed changes, including the authorization changes related to purchasing in the municipal code. So recap from the May 21st meeting, we discussed multiple things, including some of the items that have been changed in the municipal code, like some cleanup language, eliminating outdated items, and updating the public project limits to match the state public contract code. And the council had some discussions about two different sections within the municipal code that were proposed to change. One was the basis of awards section and the delegation of department director authority. And the council also provided direction to see city manager authorization levels of different agencies for professional services and non-public projects. So first off, we have the basis of awards section. There was some updated language that caused concern about the lowest responsive, and, I'm sorry, we updated the language to show the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and added a sentence that refers to other relevant factors, such as prices of consideration. So that item has been amended and is presented for you in the redline version attached to today's agenda. The second item was the delegation of department director authority. My understanding was the request was to have the delegation limited to 30 days unless approved by the city manager, but at the moment, the code already requires the city manager to approve all delegation of department director authority, so that one was not amended from what was presented at the last meeting. Then providing you a look at the comparisons with other local agencies, we reviewed the research that we had already completed, and then added some additional cities into our list. So over the next three slides, you'll see a total of 23 agencies, including the city of Corona. The agencies are sorted by population, and the information excludes public projects, so this is just focusing on our non-public projects, which are services. Services for general items, such as landscape maintenance, professional services, auditing and engineering services, things like that. So on this very first slide, you can see that there are a total of nine cities, ranging, the authorization ranges from $30,000 up to $120,000. On this next slide, there are eight cities, including Corona, which is the third from the bottom. You can see the range for this is $30,000 to $250,000. And on this last slide, a total of six cities, the range is $75,000 up to $1 million with the city of Irvine. So like I said, a total of 22 cities were surveyed. The authorization for non-public projects ranges anywhere from $30,000 up to 1 million. The amounts are a little all over the map, and the size of the city doesn't necessarily dictate the authorization level. The median value for all these cities is $100,000. So based on that, we've provided some updated options for the council's consideration, and again, this is just with the non-public projects, which is professional and general services. Option one is to maintain the current authorization limits in the Corona Municipal Code. Option number two is to increase the department director level to 75,000, and the city manager level to 125,000. That's closely aligned with what CPI has changed since 2018, when the last time was that the city manager level was changed. Option number three increases the city manager level to 150,000. Option four is to 175. Option number five is 200,000, and option number six is at 220,000, which aligns with the public contract code for public projects. I'm going to come back to this slide for discussion. So the next steps is for the council to take action on the ordinance tonight, and then the second reading would be considered at the June 18th meeting, and then we would have the changes effective July 18th. So again, the ask for the City Council is to discuss the proposed changes, including the authorization limits related to purchasing. And now I'll go back to that options slide. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have, or I'll let you take over the discussion.
Kim, can you explain again what, what is the value of increasing these limits? What is it, what is it, what benefit is that to the citizens?
So the, what the goal was, is when we took on this project, there's a lot of other purchasing process changes that we're looking, evaluating to streamline and speed up our system a little bit. And so this was one of the areas that we identified, that by potentially increasing the city manager's authorization level, that then it would remove some things that needed to come to City Council for consideration, and that would just speed up the timeline a little bit. So I have the information at different values, if, if that's what you're asking for, of how many that would not come to council?
Well, I guess, just trying to figure out, why would we change this? You know, specifically?
Well, and really, the whole purpose is we were looking at making other changes in the municipal code, and this was something that, because we were doing those changes anyways, we looked at suggesting this is an opportunity to streamline the process a little bit, because there's a long lead time for departments to bring things to council. But again, that's up to the, the council's discretion, whether or not they're interested in changing that item.
But regardless of the number that we land on, it still gets reported out, whatever that money was spent on. So if, like in Irvine, the, the city manager has a million dollars that he can just spend without coming to council?
Yes.
So if the city manager goes out and spends a mill, will the council ever know about it?
It depends on what processes they have in place, or what reporting requirements that they've established in order to understand that information.
There's a potential that their Irvine City Council would never know that the city manager spent a million dollars.
Yeah, I don't know what the rules are in Irvine, so I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that, I know specifically, I don't know what, what they request from a reporting standpoint.
Okay, any comments, guys? Then, have you guys had any comments, though? I was going to ask you, do you have any comments right now? Comments or questions?
A question.
That's a question you got?
You know, last time that this was presented, Mr. Ellis wasn't here. And I'd actually like, because this is his, this is his ask, I'd like to know what's behind the ask. I'd like to understand why.
That's what I was trying to get at, too.
Was that directed at me?
You are Mr. Ellis.
Yeah. To be clear, it's not my ask. The, the entire team worked on this. At the end of the day, if you look at the purchasing power of $100,000 seven years ago, when this was first revised to today, it's significantly less. We can bring every item to council, but it's really a matter of getting the job done quicker. We're routinely criticized as being slow, and this was one of, a whole suite of things that we could do to speed up our purchasing. But since you asked for my opinion, I don't want you to prove anything that you're not completely comfortable with, so if this gives you heartburn, or you're not, you don't feel comfortable about it, leave it as it is. It's not a do-or-die thing, it's simply part of a suite of things that we could do to update our purchasing to try to be more efficient. That's all.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, can I also just clarify your question, just to make sure everybody is understanding that? There's nothing non-public about what goes on in Irvine, so any purchase that is made is public record, so there is the, and presumably, they have the open checkbook sort of thing like we do, so anybody can find any of those purchases. There's nothing secret about it.
But someone would have to actually go looking for it.
Yes, unless there's, unless there's some sort of, which I think was what Kim was referring to, unless they have some sort of reporting process to the City Council regarding what purchases are routinely made. Maybe there is something like that.
Sorry, I did, and thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Sitten, about the, because that was my idea about the having, and, and my point was, like in my company, there's some blanket DOAs that are done, and when you delegation of authority, you can, you know, my boss says, hey, I don't like this, I, I don't want to report to this level, so I'm just going to delegate everything below this to whatever. I don't want that to happen, I want there to be a limit on time. So it is truly a, an emergency delegation, not a, not a blanket delegation, because we could set a delegation here, and, and, you know, not, not saying that Mr. Ellis, and who knows, maybe Mr. Ellis isn't here next year, or next week, or he has to buy a bus, or whatever. I, I, again, because it's not about you, right? So I'd like to, I'd like that to be, there'd be a limit on that, so you, these limits are, are for directors, the assistant city managers, and the city manager.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
Evening again. Hello? Is it this one? Is it this one? There we go. With all due respect to my, to my friend, Mr. Durleth, they're not public. Quit, quit, quit with that. You, you can't go look up something that you don't know exists. So unless you're just going to, like, look at every single one and track down every single expenditure, and then figure out who authorized it, that's not reasonable, and it's not public, and it's not transparent. There's always a trade-off between efficiency and accountability. And, and, and to say, well, you know, well, the information exists, therefore it's, it's public, is ridiculous. There's lots of things that, that a normal, regular human being is never going to know about what happens in this, within the walls of this building. So if, if there is something, and I really think that Wes's suggestion from last time, based on RCTC, is very reasonable, that if, if something goes outside the normal process and doesn't come to the council, there should be an accountability. We do that regularly, we have financial reports, you know, that are, that are put in quarterly, you know, from the various little sub-agencies that, that you guys run, you know, financial reports, you could do the same thing. You know, the public needs to have a way to know what's going on, that's, that it's out there, that it's listed somewhere, you know? So it, there should be some kind of disclosure. I, I think it's a reasonable thing, I think we've, we've run into the situation a lot of times where, you know, having an increase becomes, you know, it becomes problematic because you wait so long to do an increase, that it looks bigger than what it is, than what it would have been. You know, it's reasonable to increase it at a period of time based on CPI. So why not every year? Why, okay, so you set it at 120 this time, and say, okay, every year, when you do the LMDs, you do all the other scalers, all the other increases to match CPI and to match increased costs, that you do the same thing. You could do that pretty simply, you just pick an index, you know, pick the top-line CPI index, and just, you know, have an item that comes back every year, and it changes, goes from 128, or 125 to 131, and just scale it every year. If, if, seems like a reasonable thing to do. I don't think anybody's arguing against the existence of the time value of money, you know? I, I think it's a reasonable thing to do. You know, so I can't, to, to, to the mayor's point, just to, just to blanket change it over, you know, one or two items per council agenda, which, which that was the number, I think I had it figured at two items per council meeting, you know, doesn't seem worth it. It doesn't seem worth it to make it at 220 or some, some larger number. You know, why not just keep it the way it is, or slightly, you know, slightly increase it and scale it? That way, it's not getting, the problem's not getting bigger and longer and being put off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. So, Mr. Ellis, you make a good point with the money not being the same value as it was seven years ago, so I can appreciate that. And we have been harping on you guys to make purchasing better, to make things go smoother and quicker. So going back to slide eight, I, I'm okay with splitting the baby with like an option three.
Mayor, can I also point out one other thing? To his point with respect to the CPI, the public works contracting numbers are routinely increased by the state to reflect the CPI. So to the extent that we're increasing those public works numbers pursuant to what state law allows, you're basically following a CPI increase. And so to have, and the city has always wanted its other purchasing types to match the public works types, just for consistency's sake. So if you followed those numbers, you are in fact following a CPI increase, it's just one that's established and implemented by the state every two to three years.
Yeah, the state also says we could pay ourselves 2,600 bucks a month, and we chose not to do that, too.
True.
My point was, he thinks that we're not following a CPI process, but the public works increases in numbers are in fact basically a CPI increase.
Yeah, and I, I do like the idea of looking at it every year and seeing, you know, what is it, what's it gone up, and just increasing it a little bit each year to keep up with the CPI, rather than, you know, every 10 years or whatever, increase it. I, I still believe that we could go to an option three now, and then look at doing the incremental stuff to where it doesn't seem like a big deal, if you just do it annually, at a much, much lower increase.
I have comments.
Sure.
I, I want to be very clear, I have found in my time working with Mr. Ellis that he is an extremely frugal person, and please don't take this the wrong way, but he's the cheapest son of a bitch I've ever met in my entire life.
I get that at home a lot, too.
This is the man who did his own roof, right, in the 100-degree weather, so I, I'm not, I'm not concerned with, that you're spending money frivolously. However, I will point out something that you have said to me several times, is that we don't speak in generalities, we speak in specifics. And so if there are times that, that we are taking too long to make purchases, we don't know about that. I would suggest that that is good reporting, on saying, you know, we had, it took us six months to get this because we needed to get it agendized, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's no metric that says if we, if you had a $220,000 limit, that it would have cut purchasing down, purchasing time down by X amount of time, or so on and so forth. So, and I think that, that what Mr. Morgan said, and what Mr. Durleth said, you have, both things are right at the same time, right? It's not easy to find things in the public sphere. Even if it is posted online, you need to have a, you know, a detective degree to figure out what some of these things mean in government finance. So yeah, it is there, but it doesn't mean that it's easy to find, and it looks like these are being tied to CPI as well. So $220,000 for me is, not only is it a non-starter, but it, you know, in, in looking at other cities around us, it's, it's not very common. I think the very common amount is somewhere between 125 and 150, so I would suggest two things. I'm, I'm fine with either option two or option three, whichever gets the most votes, but more importantly, I want to see the reporting, right? I want to know why it's taking us long, why it's taking us so long to do things, and if it's, if this is the only holdup, well, at least we'll have data to see. We just don't have the data, it's just kind of a, a guess, hey, if we were up at $220,000, we could do things a lot faster. There's no data point, that's just speaking in generalities. You don't like it when, when I do it, I don't like it when you do it either, so I get your feeling now. So I, I'm fine with either 125 or 150, it's the reporting, to me, that is most impactful.
And, and to that point, I, I'm, I think I'm in the same boat. I think that's what I proposed last time, was the 125 and 75, but I, the one thing I didn't see that, that we brought up at the, the last meeting was, that there'd be a quarterly report of when this was used. I didn't see that in the presentation.
And that's something we can absolutely do, if that's the council's direction, yes.
Yeah. That's something I would like to see.
And going back to Tony's point, we had estimated that by certain things not coming to council, that it would save about three to four weeks off, off the timeline, it wouldn't save months and months. And, and like Mr. Ellis said, we were looking at a whole host of things to try to improve the process, this was not the only thing that was evaluated.
But it, it was the only thing that was brought forward, though, right? I mean, what were the other, what were the other things that I'm missing?
Oh, there's quite a few. Kim, do you want to?
There's quite a few, but they're more operational process in nature, and not necessarily part of the municipal code. part of the municipal code.
Well, you know, Kim, we don't do operations. We're big picture.
Finally learned that.
You know he's going to quote yourself, right?
We're going to pull that video feed and replay that.
Took you five years to figure that out.
It's my new ringtone.
Did you hear that, Tom? Policy.
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, we're the small people. Um, I, yeah, I have a few things. I, I really like Jacob a lot, and I would trust him with every penny that I own, so there's no lack of trust there. I, I'll give it all to him. The, I'm with Jim, I, I like the 150 amount. I do like somewhere quarterly or wherever, it just says Jacob spent this, on this, on this, on this, and it doesn't have to be nine-page agendas kind of a thing. And then I'm with everyone else in the world, and I don't think open checkbooks should ever be quoted in a council meeting again. So I'm, I'm there as well.
So I totally understand that the cost of things have gone up, and we need to be responsive of that, and, and we're, a good government makes changes. When it comes to the city manager's limits, it's not, I, I agree with my colleagues' comments, you are very mindful with the budget, Mr. Ellis, and, and I feel full confidence, but I want to share in that burden with your decision-making, because I think that's part of our job as a council members, and it's part of our fiduciary responsibilities to our residents. So my concern in increasing the city, the city manager's limit is the fact that we're essentially not doing our job by doing that. So I would be okay with option two, with a modest increase to your limit and removing the, the, you know, going to 75 for department directors. I really do want to see an escalator built in, so that it isn't a constant, you know, debate. And I, and I like the idea of quarterly report-outs when, when we go above these limits. I think it's just, it's good transparency, and it's a good reminder. And, and to Councilmember D'Addario's point about, you know, how do we know when the cause to the delay is done because of this? You know, I, I, I wonder if there is something, and I, and I know they're all, they're all nuanced, but, you know, the staff reports, we, we've gotten so good at our staff reports and, and putting, you know, better context, and I wonder if this might be a thing that can be added as a standard to our staff reports in a purchasing, when it's, when we're dealing about purchasing items? If the delay is, you know, this is because of the proposed limits, X, Y, and Z, if that can be included in staff reports? Because then, because then we're watching it, we're watching it for this reason, we're collecting the data, it's, we're flagging it, and next time that we need to talk about, you know, authorization limits, we would have a history of it.
I have volume three of an I Told You So book, I mean, I can, I'm happy to let staff borrow it.
Stop it. You are on one tonight. No, anyway, just an idea, but, but my, I, I stand with option two, with quarterly reports and a built-in escalator. Oh, and I like that time limit of delegation as well, that Councilmember Speak suggested.
Okay, so do you want to go ahead and make that motion, then?
Sure.
And it needs to be read, so you're going to need to modify what's written in front of you?
Actually, I will need a little bit more specificity also. If we're going to actually adopt the first reading tonight, I need to know what escalator you're talking about, and what would it, what would it apply to?
Shoot.
There you go, Jackie.
Are we doing 125 or 150?
I, I'm in favor, I'm sorry, am I in favor of option two with quarterly reporting?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm not prepared to, to have, to decide on escalator.
Yep.
Yeah, we could give Irvine a run for the money and pop them.
If we're talking, if we're talking about CPI, that language is easy to include. And if you wanted it to be CPI or a certain percentage, whichever is higher, whichever is lower, that's what you would typically see in many of your agreements with outside consultants. You often say CPI or 3%, 4%, whatever, whatever is lower.
Can we just say 5,000 a year?
Mr. Durleth, I don't believe in the original item when it was up before us, and the ask was 220,000. I don't recall that there was anything that attached it to CPI.
No.
So I don't think that we need to attach it to anything, I think that with the quarterly review, we will know if it's the right dollar amount.
That's a good point.
But you would have to amend the ordinance every single time, so it'll take you two readings plus 30 days for any of those numbers. So you would be back doing this every quarter, deciding.
Every quarter, if we don't feel that it's necessary to amend it, we just leave it the way that it is, and that doesn't require two readings, does it?
No, no, you can leave it, nothing, but if you want to change it, then it's going to require two, two readings and 30 days.
Well, Mr. Durleth, the good thing about government is it doesn't move very fast, but it's consistent. So if we decide that we need to change it, then it's just going to take a couple of months to change it.
Okay. I was just hearing, I was just hearing a desire to have a.
Yeah, and since I don't, and I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable making that call at the moment, I think I'm okay with giving it some time to play out, and if, with quarterly reports, yep, we can review it again. So, so I guess, so my motion would be to accept option number two with quarterly reports and a time, 30-day limit on delegation of authority.
Are you okay with the 30, 30-day limit on delegation of authority being in the policy that's adopted pursuant to this, so that, okay? Then, then you're good to go.
Here's my.
So I just read the blue? Or do I have to read that?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the noted option two.
Okay. Where, I'm sorry, Mr. Durleth, do I read the noted option two in this portion?
No, you can just, you can just read the recommended action and.
The record states that we're talking about option two.
Yeah.
Okay. Introduced by title only and waive full reading of consideration of ordinance number 3419. First reading of an ordinance amending chapter 3.08 of the Corona Municipal Code to update the city's purchasing regulations.
All right, please vote. Wait, a second, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, now vote. All right, that passes five, oh, moving on to boards and commissions, reports.
Mayor, sorry, just a second. I do need to get clarification for the record for the administrative report, the budget item. We received the three to two vote for recommended action A, but I need to get a vote for the remaining recommended actions. We could do that by a voice vote. Because what was voted on earlier was a three to two vote, but that was for recommended action A, but there's additional recommended actions for the budget item.
The CIP, the CIP budget is only in recommended action item A, everything else is unrelated to the CIP.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
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 I'm sorry, yes. Okay, and that, the remaining recommended actions will be noted that they were five to zero.
Copy that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so nothing from our library board of trustees. Planning and Housing Commission resubmitted tentative tract map 36864 to subdivide 2.09 acres into seven lots for residential development located on the south side of Corona Avenue and west side of Interstate 15, and the R-1-7.2, single-family residential zone. Applicant Fathi Mansros is the applicant. Are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right, is there a motion? Weston Jackie. Please vote. Okay, that's approved by, oh, there's nothing from Parks and Rec. Regional meetings update, I'm first with my RTA meetings. Let's see, total ridership continues to be up for the year, about 8.9%. On Earth Day, RTA gave about 21,500 free rides, a 10% increase over the previous year on our fixed route and go microbuses. The autonomous vehicle pilot program officially launched on May 12. The current vehicle route will complete a loop at the Riverside Municipal Airport. It's available for the public at no cost, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We had a ribbon cutting there a couple of weeks ago. Omeo is the company out of New Zealand that put the first autonomous vehicle there, we all got a ride, it was kind of cool. Boarded directors awarded an agreement to transportation management and design to conduct a comprehensive operational analysis for RTA. This will be a 10-year service plan and incorporated plan growth and development through the region. And finally, a budget hearing was held for fiscal year 2025, '26, budget fiscal year '26 to '28 short-range transit plan, and we approved and adopted the budget and short-range transit plan. Next up, we have Vice Mayor Casillas on WRCOG.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very long, close session, and so then we had a short, open session, but the, one thing that was shared was that the Clean Mobility Options Community Car Share Development has kicked off. WRCOG has kicked off this program with partner EVGUIDE, and will deploy 15 electric car-share vehicles in our city Corona, in Marino Valley, and in San Jacinto Valley. Vehicles will be available for hourly rentals by community members and will be located at areas that are accessible and well-connected to transit. This will ensure residents can easily access these vehicles. Cars will be placed according to a return-to-base model, meaning they will have a permanent spot at which they are located. This makes them easy to find. EVGUIDE, I think, is what it's, the shortness of the, anyway, is also working with agencies to provide solar panels and electric vehicle chargers at no upfront cost, resulting in long-term energy cost savings and providing reliable charging options for cars in, and the community. This effort is funded by a $1.8 million grant from CARB. That's it.
Thank you for that update. Now we have an update from Councilmember Westpeak on the, oh, wow, steering committee meeting of May 22nd.
I love it when they say, oh, wow. We just had three items, they were all informational reports, nothing to vote on. The first one was a report from Kyla Brown and Oscar Strato from the Riverside County Regional Parks and Open Space District. They gave a little background on their homeless solutions collaboration in the river. It was, you know, a pretty successful program, I've heard a little version of it before, but it's pretty neat to show, you know, how much they've really done and removed. So from a, an outcome standpoint, they cleared out 272 encampments, 272 of them, almost 800 tons of waste, 419 cars, abandoned stolen vehicles, 410, almost 1,500 tires, it's just, you know, just crazy. On the positive side, allowing them to do that, they actually were able to do some restoration of a tributary, and they were able to improve and flow for a specific fish that I know that Tom loves, the Santa Ana sucker.
Santa Ana sucker.
They've done a, the great job, and they were able to expand some habitat there. But the biggest thing I thought was the, the really interesting was that they had a record in 2023 of 18 fires, traffic collisions, or shootings that were in the river bottom, and that plummeted all the way down this year to three because of their, their efforts. So, pretty cool, it was a great handoff for them. We heard from Municipal Water District of Orange County about the, how they use some of their Prop 1, Round 1 money that came from the state. Pretty amazing, $277 million, and they were able to remove two-point, or sorry, 7.5 million square feet of turf. They installed 17,000 smart irrigation timers, 90,000 high-efficiency nozzles were installed, installed 1.5 million feet of drip irrigation, and they assisted in landscape planning for 456 residences in, in their service territory, which that was pretty cool. And then last was an update on the CARP, which is the Climate Adaptation Plan, from the governor's office. There's a $644,000 grant that will, that all of the member agencies in the three counties, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Orange County, that will use to come back with some climate actions that we can do along the, along the watershed. So, all good stuff.
Okay, thank you. And you have one more update on OCTA, State Route 91 Advisory Committee meeting?
Yes. So it was my, my, we were able to meet here, which is always fun, because I didn't have to drive to Orange County for a meeting, which is great. So the, it was my last meeting as the chair, as the chair of that, that group for the past year. So they talked about the 13 projects that are now in the current plan, that are still in either planning or in final design, over $2 billion worth of projects, 77 lane miles. The ones that will impact us, there's three projects in Orange County that are mostly 57 and the 55, some work on Placentia, and then some MetroLink improvements. But the ones that will impact us the most would be the, you know, and right now is planning the night, 1591 Express Transit Connector, which will be a connector to the MetroLink station downtown. Green River Road Bike Lane Project closure, that's in planning, in planning right now. And then the additional Santa Ana River Trail, and that's in planning, that's $36 million. The 7191 that I had the opportunity to, to tour today and got to stand on the, the bridge and, where cars will be traveling really soon, so they're going to have a, a 55-hour closure to do the final alignments, and I think everything will be open except for the, the, the two lanes that'll eventually take you from the 71 going south and connecting to the 91 east. Those will be done over the next, you know, the next probably month or so, but the bridge looks great, I think it's going to have, you know, a big impact in getting people kind of out of the main line of the freeway, and less traffic and less, and less accidents there. The other one is improvements on the SR91 east of the 15, which I have been, I have been championing for, for seven years, and it finally got on the, on the list, and they're doing preliminary engineering, and that'll be the final improvements in 91 from the 15 to just past Pierce Street. So, very excited about that. Some of them have already been done as part of other projects, but this will be the final push forward. And then there's three by-county projects, the 24191 toll express connector that I still have some issues with, that we're working through with RCTC and OCTA, or TCA, and that's $524 million, and they're in final design and ready to kick pretty soon, which will be a direct connector from the 241 into the 91 toll lanes, which should take cars off of the Windy Ridge Toll Facility there. It will be told, it will be very expensive and a pain in the butt, that's one of the reasons why I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not all excited about, we're still working through some of the issues. And then the other one that's kind of my, my baby is the, the eastbound corridor operations project. So on what we did on the westbound side, that additional lane that goes from Green River to the 241, there'll be an additional sixth lane from the 241 to the 71. That project's in preliminary environmental revalidation, because it did change a little bit. And then the last will be some additional westbound improvements between the 241 and 71 to kind of finish some of those original plans. We got a, a full background of where we are in traffic volumes, which was absolutely astounding how much they are up. On the RCTC side, which is basically just the county, last year, 2024, 13.7 million, this year, 15.5 million, so two more million people have driven that. On the Orange County side, only about a million more, about 800,000, which is crazy. So that equated financially, which, you know, not a great thing, and I pointed out in the meeting, the RCTC side, so OCTA went from $49 million to revenue to $52 million. On the RCTC side, went from 64 million to 77 million, a 19.5% increase. And that's just, the annual traffic volumes are, are well and above, very well and above what they were even when the, the toll lanes opened.
More working from home.
Yeah, people are, people aren't working from home anymore. So I know that, that Mr. Moody likes the, the call center statistics, so I'll, I'll send those to you, but they're, they're not doing as good as they were last time, so whatever they were doing, they didn't, they're not answering the, the calls as fast. And then the one thing I, I hadn't heard about was the clean air exemption will most likely expire September 30 on the toll lane. So those of you that are driving electric vehicles in the toll lanes for free will not be able to anymore past September 30 unless there's some federal change to that law, and that law will expire in September, and most likely it will. Sarah talked about the 71, and that's probably it. I think that there's, OCTA is really looking forward to, they're told, they're going to be doing some major improvements on their toll facility, new. going to be doing some major improvements on their toll facility, new paving. There'll be some paving projects on the Riverside side, probably late this year. And we have a brand-new technology that their, RCTC is using to detect people that are three-plus cheaters. So people, they estimate right now that almost 40% of the people that use the three-plus lane do not have three-plus in there, and they, they are doing very limited review. However, RCTC has a new program that's thermal imaging or infrared imaging and five different cameras that they're, they're playing with right now. Then you're using AI to identify whether or not there's a third person in the car. If there isn't, you will be getting a full fare and a $5, $5 charge for the AI review if you were caught cheating. A few of us thought that number should be a lot higher, and you should get the penalty. However, there's some state law that, that runs against it. So, but that, that program's being piloted right now, and it will be instituted most likely in the next couple of weeks. So I think between that and the, the, you know, the exemption for, for electric vehicles is going to be an interesting change.
Will there be signage to let the cheaters know that they're going to be caught cheating?
Yes. There's already been some, some mailers that have come out, but there'll be, people have already noticed. I, I answered some folks already. So yeah, I'm really happy that they'll start catching the cheaters.
It's three-plus when you're driving at night. That's the, that's the rule. Not me, but.
Infrared.
Thank you for providing those updates. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards?
Mr. Mayor.
We do not have any speaker cards.
All right. Yeah?
I just, I wanted to ask a quick question.
Oh, yeah.
Is, is Orange County, did they institute dynamic pricing on their tolls yet?
They do not. They don't yet, but they're looking into it.
Okay.
They have to do, they have to do an SB 194 advertisement, but they're looking at doing it because right now they set their tolls monthly.
So they're going to grow revenue by catching cheaters and letting the CARP exemption go?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. City attorney's comments. Mr. Durleth, you good?
Good.
City manager comments?
No comments. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Jackie said you had something to talk about.
Yeah, I did. I, when was it? Was it yesterday that we were, yeah, yesterday, we had a pre-demolition ceremony at Park Ridge and Main for the incoming education facility, extension of Norco College with RCCD. This is a really big deal. This is a really big deal. We're going to have higher education come to the city of Corona, and we're going to finally take care of that blighted corner. You'll be happy to, to see some progress before the end of the summer. You're going to see some buildings come down. The future buildings, it will focus on STEM education, so the science, technology, engineering, and math. And it is going to be built in a phased approach. And they, we will start seeing students there by 2030. And while we've joked around a bit about the name of the college, no established name for the college has yet been decided. This will be an extension, though, of Norco College. And, and it's wonderful to have RCCD in our city. So.
Anybody else?
I got one thing too, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, I've been asked a couple of questions that, that seem to be on folks' minds, so I just wanted to address it. Whatever the historical clock was that was at SGC, and I'm sure.
Tom stole it.
Tom or Wes could tell you all about it, but we, the city removed it. It's for safekeeping. So I know a lot of people have reached out. It will, it will be put in a, in a position of prominence when the mall is under, underway to being restored. And then also, I got some people reached out to me about what they had thought were traffic signals that were going up on Sixth Street, but they are crosswalks that are going up on Sixth Streets that were approved, I think it was five years ago. And they're, they're getting up there now so pedestrians can cross safely. Really quick, you know, we, we talk a lot about, you know, doing things, and we make plans, and we talk more, and we talk, and we talk, and we talk, and we talk. And it's good to see some action. So, you know, the entire time that I've been on council, and I'm sure all my colleagues would say the same thing, people have said very specific things. What are you guys doing with Park Ridge and Main? I am so happy, as I'm sure we all are, that something is being done on Park Ridge and Main, and that demo is going on. There's continued demo going on the PD building. Wes and I happened to show up there at the same time, at the same day.
Taking pictures of each other.
Taking pictures because we're just so excited to see things coming down and, and work being done. And lastly, there was a soft opening last week for a restaurant, or for a food chain that I have long loved here, that is here in Corona. And they're having their grand opening this weekend. And, and of course, it's on a weekend that I have, will not be available to be there. So I'm hoping that all my colleagues can go. And it is a wonderful, wonderful place. And I can, in my head, I can smell it just walking in. And it's something that is etched in my head forever. So Claros has had their grand, is having their grand opening this weekend. And for those of you that haven't tried it, I would highly suggest it. And that's it. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to, to thank city manager and, and vice mayor and working with RCCD to get things going at Park Ridge and Main. I, I made a joke to trustee Hedrick that, you know, he said it felt kind of weird. And to President Green, it felt weird to celebrate something being torn down. And I said, well, just wait because we're going to be tearing a lot of stuff down in Corona. So we're pretty excited about it and, and get, get used to it because we're, there's going to be a lot of it. So, but I, lastly, I just, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge councilman Dario's hard work on Claros. I walked in and I fought my way in. There was like 200 people in line. This is like on a Wednesday afternoon, or sorry, not Wednesday afternoon, because they're closed on Wednesdays. It was, I think it was either Monday or Tuesday. I walked in and met the, met the folks there that, you know, the owner's daughter and, and the, the son and great people. There was literally out the door. You couldn't get in the door. I, I think I bought just some cookies that were on a shelf because that's the only thing I could get, because everything else was getting, you know, swept out the, swept out the door. But I just wanted to acknowledge the aid that, that you, you made the call. You, you made sure to connect them. Staff, you know, you know, kind of ran them, helped out too. And I know the city manager went and met with them. They told me all about your meeting, and we'll, I guess we'll have a talk about that later. But all good stuff for the most part. But I just want to say this because, you know, we get criticized a lot for not, not, you know, focusing on, on what the, the good things are. And I just wanted to make sure I thank you for, for your effort there. And I'm looking forward to my first sandwich. And I will, I will enjoy it at some point if I can actually get in the door. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Jackie for reporting out on the college. And sooner or later, they'll get the name of it right. They haven't yet. Mayor Steiner and myself, we, we attended the library tribute, it was held at the library tribute to Jerry Seifer. We learned that his brother is named Tom, so Tom and Jerry. And his brother is actually a famous astrophysicist that teaches at Caltech. So who would have known? The guy is, you Google his name, and he's just, he's famous. It was a packed room. It was really clear that people came to see and remember Jerry. And the, the library did a good job of having all his paraphernalia out and pictures. And the pictures that he's taken throughout his career are incredible. He, from local kids to Larry Bird, to Michael Jordan, to anybody that you can think of as famous, Jerry took a picture of him. It was cool to me when one of the people in attendance was a former Raider. He, he specifically made the trip just to come and say how much he loved and appreciated Jerry over the years. What touched me the most about Jerry Seifer, and people spoke about him glowingly for a good two hours, my favorite comment was that his best friend was his mother. And so he would go home to Pasadena whenever he could and just hang out with his mother. And that says a lot about a man. Speaking of mothers, my mother has texted me constantly during this meeting, and she's worried about Jim and wants to know if Jim loves Tony. And I said, I'm just answering you now, Mom, that Jim has great love for Tony. So I know there's been a little contention.
Don't put words in my mouth.
I feel Jim loves Tony. I love Jim. Mom loves Jim. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item 15, which is future agenda items. As a reminder, when we talk about this, has to have a majority of support to put council to work on any item that we bring up. So I do have one. I received a request from Mr. Kirk Carlson, a U.S. Marine Corps veteran and current resident of Corona. He was asking the city to support an advocacy effort called the Reasonable Ranks Campaign, which is a community-driven initiative aimed at reforming military discharge policies to give injured veterans the opportunity to continue serving in non-combat roles. And I did call Mr. Carlson, and I told him that that didn't fall under our legislative platform, but that I felt it was such an easy ask to simply provide a letter of support that I would bring it to my colleagues. I also reached out to the incoming commander of American Legion Post 742. And he said, this is absolutely a thing. You know, you get hurt on the job, and they just discharge you. So even if you were a good employee, there's no efforts to be made to put you in another type of role. And I can relate to it. In the fire department, it was, we had guys getting hurt and women getting hurt during their careers. A ceiling fell on them or whatever, and broke their neck, broke their back, whatever it was. And they just couldn't be put in a suppression activity again because of the dangers and the physical nature of it. But our department, with the city's support, always found a job for that person in, in a fire prevention role, fire investigation role, something to where that valuable employee could still be part of the department. And I think there's a lot of value to someone serving in the military who gets hurt but still wants to be in the military. And you know, there's all kinds of non-fighting jobs that they could find. So it, it seemed like a really easy ask to simply provide a letter of support. It's a grassroots effort. He had a fundraiser, kind of a introduction event at Lazy Dog last week, got like 140 signatures. So anyways, I just wanted to see if you guys would support that.
Yes.
I fully support it.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So staff will get to work on putting a letter of support together. So thanks, guys. And let's see, Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards regarding that item?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the future agenda item.
Okay. Next council meeting, June 18th. Meeting's adjourned.